Good afternoon. Welcome to the March 12, 2015 Meeting of the City-County Planning Board. If you would please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today's meeting is being broadcast live by WISDOM TV Digital Media. It'll be rebroadcast at 10:00 a.m. Friday morning and again at 4:00 p.m. Sunday afternoon. Before getting into our business today, I want to welcome George Bryan to his first meeting, just been appointed by the City Council to a four-year term on the Planning Board. We're pleased to have you with us. Thank you. Our first order of business today will be the Consent Agenda. These are items which the petitioner is requesting continuance or withdrawal, items for which the Planning Board has recommended approval and no one has signed up to speak in opposition. For our public hearings today, each side will have a total of 12 minutes. There is no rebuttal period. Once the public hearing is closed and the Board goes into work session, no one will be permitted to speak unless a Planning Board member asks a question. For general use district zoning, the Board must consider the full range of uses allowed in the district. Therefore, a petitioner may not refer to a specific use. For special use zoning, however, it must be very specific as to the uses and how the site will be developed. The items under Section B of our agenda require final approval either by the City Council or County Commissioners. As such, votes taken today are recommendations to go to those bodies for their consideration. If you are addressing the Board today, before you begin your remarks, please give us your name, address, and zip code for the record. Now, well, first of all, the minutes, I guess, before the consent agenda. We need to approve the minutes of the February 12 and '23 meetings. Are there any additions, corrections, any of those minutes?
Move of approval.
Motion by Mr. Mulligan, second. Mr. Little, in discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. And now calling David Reed to present our consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, the first item we have is a continuance. And this is Item B8. This is docket number W-2356. This has met the requirements of the Planning Board for an automatic continuance, so there's no motion required by the Board, and we will place this item on your April agenda. The first consent item is Item B2. This is zoning docket W-3246. This is a site plan amendment for a portion of the property that's zoned MUS and a rezoning from RS9 to MUS for a portion of Brookberry to expand the boundaries of Brookberry. This property is located west of Metalark Drive, you see here, and it's currently in the county. And we'll switch to the site plan. The site plan is oriented 90 degrees clockwise, so north is to the right of the page, but it's this property. And there you see the property. The boundary at the bottom is the RS9 portion. The average density in this plan is about two units per acre, and the current RS9 zoning allows about four units per acre, so it's actually a down zoning. And it would add this to the Brookberry plan. The road will be connected into Brookberry, and there's also a stub to the south that could be committed in the future to an existing neighborhood to the south. So staff recommends approval of the site plan amendment, the rezoning, and the site plan with conditions.
Okay. No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed.
Move of approval.
Second motion, Mr. Mulligan, second. Mr. Little, in discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
The next consent item is Item B4, and this is zoning docket W-3252. This is a request to rezone from LO to PBL for property located south of East Fifth Street, west of Martin Luther King Jr. Drive. The proposed uses are consistent with the area plan uses recommended for this area, and staff does recommend approval of the PBL zoning.
Again, no one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed.
Move of approval.
Second motion by Mr. Mulligan, second. Ms. Donigan, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
The next consent item is Item B5. This is zoning docket W-3253. This property is a request to rezone from RS9 to LOL, limited office, limited special use zoning. It's located on the northwest side of Reedsville Road, across from Grover Street. And the petitioners have volunteered a number of voluntary conditions to keep the site looking somewhat residential along this residential area, also a volunteer condition to interconnect with the church property that is behind it and to the side of it. Staff does recommend approval of this LOL zoning.
Anyone here opposed to this recommendation? You opposed to it, sir?
Not necessarily opposed to it. I do represent the church. As of today, we have not been contacted about any kind of work, one way or the other, with them on the park or the crossover. We're not necessarily opposed to it, but we haven't had a chance to talk to them.
Well, we do. When they volunteer that they would do a cross-access even with the church, it doesn't require that the church do one with them. So if they put it on paper, it's available for you to work on in the future.
Just wanted to make sure of that. But otherwise, we're not.
Okay. Let's get your name, though, if you would please, sir, for the record.
Todd Parker, Business Manager, Edgewood Baptist Church.
And the address, please, sir?
4067 Reedsville Road, Winston Salem, 27101.
Okay. Thanks, sir. All right. Okay. Anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing none, now declare the public hearing closed.
Move of approval.
Second. Motion, Mr. Lamb, second. Mr. Mulligan, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next consent item is Item B6. This is zoning docket W-3254. It's property located at the intersection of Haynes Mall Boulevard and South Stratford Road, and it's actually an out parcel of the Lowe's Home Improvement Center. This site is currently zoned GBS. Its most recent rezoning to GBS was specifically for a car wash, and that's the only use they asked for. Even though they had a number of uses permitted on the site prior to that, they were pretty sure they were going forward with the car wash, and they asked for one use. The car wash never happened. Now it's in for a retail store, so we recommended they include the other uses that it might change to in the future. They've included that list of uses and a site plan. And I have the site plan here showing in the dark gray areas, the new parking area and the new building proposed for this site. In your packet, you'll also see volunteered building elevations. This is one. You have them in your packet for all four sides, and have agreed to conditions to screen the roof mechanical equipment as well. So, again, commercial properties don't require elevations. They volunteered them, but this is consistent with other uses and development pattern in the area, and staff does recommend approval with conditions.
Anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed.
Move of approval with conditions. Second.
Motion, Mr. Lamb, second. Mr. Mulligan, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay. The next consent item is Item B7. This is docket W-3255. This is a request to rezone from LBS and RM18 to all RM18. The property is located on the south side of 13th Street, east of University Parkway, and is currently vacant. You can see there's RM18 zoning on all three sides of the property, and half of this site is already zoned RM18. Staff does recommend approval of this general use zoning.
Anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed.
Move of approval.
Second. Motion, Mr. Lamb, second. Mr. Mulligan, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay. The next case is also out at Brookberry. This is Item B9, zoning docket 3257, and this is a rezoning from county zoning jurisdiction to city zoning jurisdiction. The property is going through the process of being annexed by the city voluntarily. All of the phases of Brookberry come in for voluntary annexation after they're platted, and you can see the property to the southwest of this particular site is already in the city limits. A little bit of this property is zoned RS9. The lion's share is zoned MUS, so the request is to change it from county jurisdiction, MUS and RS9, to city jurisdiction, MUS and RS9, and staff recommends approval.
Anyone opposed to their recommendation? Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed.
Move of approval.
Second. Motion, Mr. Lamb, second. Mr. Mulligan, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
We have another property going through annexation that also has to have the zoning jurisdiction changed. This is a property that's adjacent to the Winston Salem city limits. It's also right across the Davidson County line, so this property is actually in Davidson County, and they're requesting to be annexed into the city of Winston Salem. Right now, there's not an exact changeover in zoning districts. Their zoning of the property is HC in Davidson County. We're proposing LB zoning, and we used the same process we did when we adopted the UDO and had to change zoning districts into different ones. The development of the site and the use of the site is an LB-type use, so we're recommending changing it from Davidson County HC zoning to city LB zoning.
Anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing none, declare the public hearing closed.
Move of approval.
Second. Any discussion? Motion by Mr. Lamb, second. Mr. Mulligan, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, just for the public, anyone who has any questions on that, this action that you just took is simply a recommendation on the zoning conversion. It has nothing to do with the annexation action, other than you've got to clean up the zoning if it has been annexed. But the owner of this property has to bring his request through the Davidson County Commissioners first for permission before it can be considered by the Winston Salem City Council. So what you're doing here is simply making your recommendation on the zoning conversion if and when that annexation happens, so.
Okay. We have a couple of non-public hearing consent items. The first one is a subdivision. It is Metalark Estate. It is off the west-east side of Metalark Drive, across from Brookberry. And you see it's a small tract of land here in the location map. Site plan shows, consists of one cul-de-sac road with lots around it. This is actually continued from your February meeting while they worked out the stormwater pond issues with our stormwater division. Initially, they had shown an access easement on the back of two lots, and it was recommended that they just create a lot that's owned by the homeowners association for that stormwater pond, rather than have it as an easement on someone's property. So they've done that. They created a lot with an access easement serving it. This does not meet the connectivity index. However, there's good reason for that, and staff agrees that it cannot meet connectivity because of the lotting pattern around the property. There's nowhere to stub out in any direction logically. So with that, one last thing is that the road name that was originally shown in your packets, that was not an acceptable road name under today's standards. They, we are striking the road name from this plan when it's, if you all approve it going forward, there won't be a road name on it, but we've added a condition. I'd like to read into the record. Under prior to the signing of final plats, Condition C reads, "Developer shall get approval for a street name from E-911." So we won't sign a plat until they've done that. They understand that, and they're fine with that. So with that, we recommend approval with conditions.
Move of approval with conditions.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lamb, second. Mr. Mulligan, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
We have two Planning Board review items. Seems to have frozen up on me here. Let me try this again. There we go. First one is Mount Taverd Methodist Church. It's on the northeast side of Robin Hood Road, and this is an existing church. We have a site plan showing some changes. All of the changes of the parking area is happening over existing parking areas. The dark gray areas are two new building additions to the campus, and we've worked with petitioner on this and came up with a number of conditions that they agreed to, so we would recommend approval of this Planning Board review with conditions.
Move of approval.
Second. Motion, Mr. Mulligan, second. Mr. Lamb, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
And the last consent item is Item D2, and this is Hillides at Little Creek, multifamily development. And we have a zoomed-out version of the site plan showing the entire extent of it with stormwater controls on the west side and a driveway access. There's actually two driveway accesses over a tributary to Little Creek that served the site. This picture is a little bit more blown up. You see the access to the east, secondary way in and out, two four-story apartment buildings. And then the main entrance, sort of in the middle of the site, has a sidewalk which allows people to get across the creek and then go down to the Little Creek Greenway, as well as get out to Haynes Mall Boulevard and all the shopping out there. So we also have the elevations of the site, and this is the required elevations for multifamily. And this meets all the requirements of the ordinance, and there's a number of conditions associated, and staff recommends approval with conditions.
Move of approval with conditions.
Second. Motion, Mr. Lamb, second. Mr. Mulligan, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
All right. I'll turn it over to Gary Roberts.
Next item on your agenda is zoning docket F-1550. This case was continued from your February meeting, and the petitioner is Family Dollar Rural Hall LLC, and the site is 1.02 acres, located on the southeast corner of Bethany Rural Hall Road and Angus Street, and the request is a special use rezoning from RS9 to LBS. This is Legacy's Growth Management Plan. You can see it's located northern portion of the county. It's actually within the corporate limits of Rural Hall. It's within the yellow growth management area, three suburban neighborhoods. And this is a zoning map showing the subject property. It's currently zoned RS9. We found out recently that the structure that was on there has been removed, so the property is vacant. It's surrounded by RS9, single-family zoning on three sides, to the north, east, and west. It's directly north of the commercial area there at the interchange of Highway 52 and Bethany Rural Hall Road, directly adjacent to the Rite Aid Pharmacy, and that's where it would receive its access from, through their driveway on the Bethany Rural Hall Road. So you can see the housing that is located there along Angus and Hallmark and Bethany Rural Hall Road adjacent to the site. This is an aerial photograph showing the subject property, again, the development pattern around there and lotting pattern. It's located within the Rural Hall Area Plan that was adopted in 2011. It's actually within the northern boundary of the Bethany Rural Hall US-52 Activity Center, which calls for a mixture of uses in a pedestrian-oriented fashion, as does the property directly across the street. The recommended uses are offices and low-intensity commercial, so that would exclude uses like convenience stores, uses with drive-throughs, restaurants with drive-throughs, uses like that, so that the requested use is for a retail store, which is consistent with that land use recommendation. These images are taken on site. This is looking north on Bethany Rural Hall Road. The site is on the right. Again, that house there on the right has been removed. This house has been removed. This is looking back south. You can see the Rite Aid facility there in the background. This is looking south on Bethany Rural Hall Road towards US-52. The site's on the left, so this is a major thoroughfare. It's a three-lane section. Right now, the trip count is about 9,300 trips per day, and the estimated capacity is 15,800 trips per day on this road. This is looking north of Bethany Rural Hall, just past the intersection there of Angus Street. This is on Angus Street. The site is to the left. This is about where their second driveway would intersect with Angus in this general location. And this is the house that's closest to the site there on the same side of Angus Street. The site plan here shows an 8,320-square-foot retail structure. They're shown in red. It's got about 28 parking spaces. You can see, again, the access point to the south, which is where it connects on with the existing driveway into the Rite Aid facility there. Hallmark Drive directly across the street, along the two road frontages. They've agreed to install sidewalks, dedicate an additional 10 feet of right-of-way along Bethany Rural Hall Road, and up on Angus Street, their other secondary access would be. And then right in the northeast corner there, the upper right corner, is where their stormwater management facility would be. That last home that I showed you is on the right, and along that entire property line, it's about 200 feet. They're showing a Type III 15-foot buffer yard, and that consists of two primary trees or two deciduous trees per 100 feet, so about four trees would be installed there. 18 primary evergreen plants. Those have to be six feet tall at installation. Those are like your hollies and cedars. Again, 18 of those per 100 feet, so 36 of those, and then 20 supplemental shrubs. Those are your smaller growth shrubs per 100 feet, so about 40 of those along that entire 200-foot property line. We encourage the petitioner, realizing that this is kind of encroaching into the residential neighborhood some, to install an additional screening fence, which they've done. They showed a six-foot privacy fence, and it's my understanding the petitioner working with a neighbor there, the neighbor would like for the fence actually to be installed on the inside of that 15-foot buffer yard, which is fine, so that's a slight deviation from the site plan that you have there. That six-foot privacy fence would be moved over. Planning staff is supportive of the request, but we realize, again, that it's going into this neighborhood. We really encourage the petitioner to try to work on the dumpster location. This shows it here circled in yellow in the mid-northern portion of the site. We feel like traffic heading north on Bethany Rural Hall Road, it's going to be pretty visible there. It's going to be pretty visible from the homes around there, even if it is fenced around. So we would have liked to have seen a better location of that. It's my understanding that they were not able to orient that in a different fashion. Stormwater, again, would go back down towards the existing Rite Aid facility there. We also encourage them to consider maybe providing some elevations. It's not certainly a requirement, but we thought that that might be an issue in this case, and they did provide some elevation. Again, the request is consistent with the commercial use recommendation of the Rural Hall Area Plan. The site is adjacent to GB zoning on the south, general business. The proposed retail store would not have direct access onto Bethany Rural Hall Road. The town of Rural Hall does not support the request, as is noted in your staff report. It is within their corporate limits. The request does extend commercial zoning deeper into a single-family residential area, as noted previously. And we do feel like there are elements of the site plan and the elevations that could be enhanced to reduce the impact on the neighborhood. Staff's recommendation is for approval, and the site plan does meet UDO requirements. And I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Gary. Any questions of staff at this time? Okay. This is a public hearing. First person to sign up is Joe Strickland. You go in first, Mr. Nielsen. Okay.
Well, that'd be good to have him available. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. I'm Don Nielsen. My address is 100 North Cherry Street, and I'm here on behalf of the petitioner. Joe Strickland, whose company submitted the petition, is also here, and he'll be glad to help answer questions as necessary. We do appreciate Mr. Roberts' presentation and the staff's recommendation, but what I'd like to do is follow up on some key points in the staff report and the area plan. And the basic question, really, is whether to follow the Rural Hall Area Plan. The area plan supports what is being proposed here, low intensity, commercial use on this specific piece of property. In 2011, that plan went through the Rural Hall Citizens Advisory Committee, went through the Rural Hall Town Council, was approved by this board, and was approved by the county commissioners. And this petition is consistent with the area plan, and we are not aware that anything significant has changed since 2011. There were two public meetings at the Rural Hall Town Hall, the second one just last week. Mr. Strickland has also talked with many neighbors one-on-one and encouraged them to call us and provide suggestions or changes or questions. And at the meeting last week, we shared changes to the site plan suggested by the town, suggested by planning staff, including what Mr. Roberts just went through. We were trying to match, the town requested that we try to match the exterior with the Rite Aid next door, and that's what we tried to do. Agreed to other changes relating to lighting restrictions and signage restrictions, fencing, and sidewalks. And we also, again, shared that sketch with the neighbors of what the building would look like, and since that time, we have heard nothing further from town or community folks with regard to possible changes in the site plan. But the two biggest questions from neighbors at the meeting last week was, why put a retail store here, and what about the traffic? Now, in answering those questions, we relied on the planning staff report and the Rural Hall Area Plan. Now, this will be a relatively small store, just a little over 8,000 square feet on one acre parcel, and the area plan places this property, as Mr. Roberts said, within the US-52 Bethany Rural Hall Road Community Activity Center. And the purpose of community activity centers is to provide shopping and services, meeting the day-to-day needs of nearby residences. That's exactly what this planned store is intended to do, serve neighbors and serve Rural Hall citizens. Now, the property south of Angus Drive is specifically discussed in the area plan, and which recommends office or low-intensity commercial development of the property located at the corner of Bethany Rural Hall Road and Angus Drive and the vacant lot south of this property and north of the drugstore. That's this property, and, again, that recommendation went through planning staff, Citizens Committee, the Town Council, Planning Board, and the County Commissioners. There were multiple public hearings. Part of that process involved reaching out to the citizens, and the plan states that citizen participation is a critical part of the area plan process and notes that both developers and neighborhood groups may use this plan to guide their future business and development decisions. With regard to traffic, which was one of the biggest issues, Mr. Roberts gave those numbers, and the staff report also says that a store of this type might generate 442 trips a day. We think that's probably high, but if you break those numbers down, over a 12-hour day, which is what we expected to be the hours here from 9:00 to 9:00, that's about 36 trips an hour, five trips every three minutes, and far less than one trip every minute. And that's simply not a significant amount for a road which the planning staff report says has a capacity of 15,800 and a daily count of 9,300. And so there just doesn't seem to be any evidence that a small retail store will have a noticeable impact on traffic. Planning looked at the traffic and has recommended approval. We do know, one of the other concerns that's been brought up is that DOT is revising its plans for this area. There have been some long-term plans. We don't know what the new plans will be, for sure, but we do know that road improvements will only improve the traffic pattern here and in the future. And, again, regardless, this small store won't play a major role in the traffic calculations. The store will also provide new jobs to Rural Hall and an increase in tax value for the county and the town. One other question that was prominently raised was that, even if this store is acceptable, won't it set a precedent for development further up Bethany Rural Hall Road? And the answer to that question is no, as long as the Rural Hall Area Plan is followed. The same area plan, which recommends low-intensity commercial use for this property, recommends no commercial development north of Angus Street. I'd like to respond also to a few things Mr. Strickland and I have heard in just going through this process in the last few months. First, I don't think it is correct to say that the neighborhood where all the neighbors are against this petition. At the community meeting last week, where 17 people attended, some were opposed, some were there on fact-finding mission, and some were in favor. Now, we didn't take a poll, but we do know that some of the closest neighbors are in support or have said that they have no objection. And Mr. Strickland put together a petition, gathered a petition. And Mr. Strickland put together a petition, gathered a petition, showing nearby neighbors who are in support. And I have that with a map attached, which I'd like to hand up, or ask Mr. Roberts to share, or Mr. Norby. The first is the original, for your record. I'll give you a minute to take a look at that, but this map, on the front, are the people who signed the petition, and on the back is the outline of where those people live. Outlined in green are the properties owned by those who signed the petition. There's a blue section outlined there, which also shows where the DOT, current plans, which we don't know where they'll be in a year or two, but the current plans show, taking a right-of-way from the property, which is on, I think, the southwest part of Hallmark Drive. And in the area plan, the area plan notes that DOT might take this property and recommends that any part of that property not taken could be used as a buffer yard for the neighborhood. Again, the point here is not to count heads, but it's to show that there is support from some very close-by neighbors, and that the neighbors are not all of one mind. The community, let me go on to note that if the community knows, as Mr. Roberts said, that this is going to be a Family Dollar store, if the rezoning passes. And to the extent that that is relevant, let me just remind people that Family Dollar is not an everything's-a-dollar store. It sells national brands, not factory seconds or overrun. But if the board has questions about Family Dollar, or the opposition brings up something in particular that's relevant to your consideration, we'd be happy to respond with information about Family Dollar. Further responding to neighborhood concerns that have been raised, just let me make clear that Mr. Strickland and his company have no designs on any other property in the area, and neither Mr. Strickland nor any future owner can deviate from what is approved without coming back through this process. The zoning only allows a retail store in accordance with the approved site plan. And to the opposition, I just want to let them know, it can't be. There's no bait and switch here. With regard to the town of Rural Hall's letter opposing the rezoning, I first want to say that the town manager, and the mayor, and the council have been nothing but gracious to us. I hope we've been the same with them. The Town Council, as you know, has no formal role in this process, in making this decision, but we wish, we do wish, we've been able to make our case directly to the council before they had sent out their written opinion. But regardless, the council has expressed to us that as long as there are neighbors in opposition, that they can't endorse this rezoning. Now, Mr. Strickland and I did go to the council meeting this past Monday night, not with any great hope of changing the council's mind, but for the opportunity to actually discuss the area plan, to discuss the staff report, and to talk with neighbors. And to the extent that community opinion is an important factor in your decision, we would point out, again, that several close-by neighbors support this proposal. But more importantly, we would respectfully suggest that the best measure of community opinion, the best measure of community value, is an area plan produced with citizen input and presented at public meetings and hearings. It's an area plan which specifically reviewed this particular parcel and found it appropriate for low-intensity commercial use. It's an area plan that was endorsed by every committee or board that had an opportunity to review it, including two elected bodies. And the purpose of the area plan is to align community interests with planning expertise, so that, as the area plan states, "Developers and neighborhood groups may use the plan to guide their future business and community development decisions." That's what happened here. Mr. Strickland followed the community plan, listened to input from neighbors and staff, is supported by the staff report and by several close-by neighbors, and it's respectfully requested that this board accept the planning staff's recommendation and recommend approval to the county commissioners. May I answer any questions?
Any questions? Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Strickland, did you want to speak?
I'm here to answer questions, sir.
Okay. Anyone else like to speak in support of this? If not, then we'll turn to the opposition. First person who signed up is Nancy Cruz. And there are three folks signed up. I don't know how many want to speak. I'll remind you, you have a total of twelve minutes to allocate among yourselves.
I'm Nancy Cruz. I live at 684 Angus Street. There is one house between my home and the property that Family Dollar wants to build on. I'm opposed to it being there mainly because of the traffic congestion that we already have. We have two business parks close by, which contribute to horrendous traffic at certain times of the day. Plus, the fact that 52 coming on and going off, to 52 North and South are right there included in that, and that gives you extra traffic for people wanting to come our way down 65 to get on 52. That's the biggest reason that I'm opposed to it. I don't think that, I forgot really what I was going to say, but I should have written all this down, I'm sorry. I really wasn't going to speak until I got here early and decided to. So that is my main concern, though, is for so much traffic. I actually, a lot of times, have to plan my activities of leaving the house for appointments and other things to certain times of the day because of trying to get out on the street. I mean, it is backed up, if you want to turn from my street, you'd have to turn left to go toward 52, or to get out. And it is backed up to my right, as far as I can see, several times during the day. Now, I can turn right and go all the way back through Rural Hall and all the way back down Old 52 and come in, but that's ridiculous. That is my main concern, is traffic.
Thank you, ma'am. Next signed up is Shirley and Jerry Shelton. Shirley's name's written an whole lot bigger. I believe she's going to speak for him.
My name is Shirley Shelton. I live at 941 Bethany Rural Hall Road, and I live right next to the, on Angus Street, runs between my house, and I live right next to the property. I'm opposed to a retail store being built there. I would not mind an office, but I am opposed to a retail store. And also, like Nancy said, the traffic. It's backed up every day in front of my house. Also, on Angus Street, we have a lot of traffic from the business coming out from behind us. And I am opposed to them making an entrance on Angus Street into this property, because we already have a lot of traffic coming out Angus using this, and this is a residential street. Also, the entrances would be right in my backyard, overlooking my backyard. I would have no privacy, and there is no way for them to screen the side next to me with three wide lanes there. And two, I'm concerned about the lights. It's already a lot of lights there. I sleep on that side. My bedroom's on that side of the house. And it's hard to get to sleep at night because of the lights already and to block them out. And this would just be that many more lights. And they said four-hundred-some cars a day, and they don't think this is a lot of cars. Well, from where I sit, that is a lot of cars, because we already cannot move, we cannot get out of our yard, our driveway, and then four-hundred more cars coming out on that side street, yeah, that's a lot for me. And Dollar Tree has bought out Family Dollar. They had said in the paper that they were going to be closing a lot of the stores. So why would they want to build another new one when there's some of them going to be closed? They've already closed some of the stores in the area, like in Old Town, in Walnut Cove. They're standing empty now. And so what happens if this is approved, and they close this store in a few months, then anything could move in, and we couldn't stop it. And so these are some of the reasons that I'm opposed to this being built.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Shelton, did you want to speak? Okay, all right. Let her speak for you again, did you? How about the mayor? I know he's going to speak.
Chairman King and board members, thank you for the opportunity to represent the town of Rural Hall. And as...
We all know you, but give us your name and address.
I'm sorry about that. I am Larry Williams, 7340 Foster Street, Rural Hall, and Mayor of Rural Hall. But our Town Council has considered this seriously and has not taken it lightly. We're concerned with, obviously, with the traffic conditions in the area, but the primary thing here is the residential character of the area. As has been mentioned, the area-wide plan that has been adopted, and it has not been adopted too long, maybe five years. When it was adopted, it was adopted as a plan and not as this is where it's going to be. And we did not consider it as such, and we didn't look at every little detail on that. We looked at the overall plan. And granted, it is a plan maybe to shoot for, but our thinking at this point is not in keeping with the neighborhood, and specifically, the neighbors directly across Highway 565, and also across Angus Street, and the Sheltons specifically. There is no way that this property could be screened from the residential area. And there is no assurance that this would be the end. It's sort of a creep, or crawl, or sprawl, beginning of a sprawl. Once it's there, there's no assurance that other things won't come in going through the process, and we understand that. So our primary concern is the change of the character of the neighborhood and its citizens. Also, looking at some of the traffic patterns, if you are familiar with the location, it doesn't take long for someone to realize you can't get out of Angus Street on 65, so you can go down Angus, turn on Old Beltway, up Form Parkway, and come out on the traffic signal. So we envision that as increasing traffic on Angus Street, residential street, as has been mentioned. Again, and certainly, Mr. Strickland and Mr. Nielsen and all have certainly been cooperative in all our discussions, but this is something that we feel real strong about, that we recommend it not be rezoned other than residential. I'll be glad to answer any questions, if you had any.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? No one else has signed up? Is anyone else like to speak?
I don't want to speak, but any of you here are against. How many neighbors are here against? Could they stand up?
All right, thank you. If there's no one else like to speak, then I'll declare the public hearing closed, and we go into work session. Well, nothing's easy, is it?
Well, I have some serious concerns about this case, and I do know a little bit about the traffic in the area, because I live close by, and I can say from personal experience that at peak hours of the day, regardless of the capacity overall of that road, at certain times of the day, it is really, really hard to even go from one side of the street to the other, and certainly not to make a left-hand turn. It's a bottleneck because of 52 being there. So I really do think there's a legitimate issue with the traffic. The other concern I have, really, is about the size of the site. I mean, the proposed building, I think, just barely fits on this site. I mean, one corner of it is right up against the forty-foot setback, so that there's really only one place to put the dumpster, because it's such a small site. And that dumpster is sitting right there by the road, right across the street from one of the speakers. And that, I think, is unacceptable in a residential area. I think it's just, the site is too small. Regardless of the fact that the area plan calls for low intensity, I think this, because of the site being so small, it makes it high intensity, high impact for the neighborhood. So I just don't think this is an appropriate request here.
Other comments?
Well, I tend to agree with what Melinda's saying in some sense, and communities have to make a decision on where they want their residential to be, and where they want the business to be. And there's some lines that have to be drawn, and if Rural Hall feels that that line needs to be drawn right there, and is supporting that, then I feel very sympathetic to what they're saying.
Barry, yes?
Well, I agree with that, but at the same time, I feel like the developer has done his homework. He's come in on an area, and I understand what the mayor's saying about when we do like an area plan, you know, we really don't rezon property, and that's the whole reason for we're here today. But at the same time, I feel like the developer has found a location that, you know, it's right next door to another business, and it's, you know, we try to put these small operations in neighborhoods, you know? We're trying to do that, and I think that, you know, this store fits in well. It is a small impact to me. I don't, you know, about the traffic, I agree. I think that any area of town, if you say, well, you've got nine-thousand cars, and it got a capacity of fifteen-thousand, well, what time of day is that? So I agree with what you're saying, Melinda. But at the same time, we just have to go on to traffic studies, and we've got to help, and these are guidelines that the developer goes by, and we go by as we listen to it. You know, it's like George said also, you know, that the thing that I hate about it is that it seems like there is, so, you know, there's ten or twelve people here that are against this, and it's really, like I said, it's really a hard decision to make, because I feel like the developer has done his homework, he's had his meetings, he's met with people. You know, he probably thought pretty much, and, you know, I've done what my due diligence, met with neighbors, and I'm pretty good to go. But then he gets here today and finds out, well, hmm, maybe I'm not as good as I thought that everything was. But at the same time, I think that he has done his homework. Like I said, I don't know which way this is going to go, but I do want to comment that, and of course, the neighbors are here, and they're doing their homework also by being here today. So this is really a hard decision for me because of, you know, everything I just said as far as, it seems like a win-win situation for the neighborhood, but evidently, I'm not sure the neighborhood feels like that. And, you know, any time that you are on the end like that, you are, you know, when you're going into the residential area, that is like moving on, or it is hard because of the screening and the lot size. But at the same time, it's only an eight-thousand-square-foot building, so that's really a small impact for this neighborhood. I mean, it is to me, I don't, you know. So I know it had been mentioned about an office building. One of the petitioners, or lady, said something about an office building. I understand that also, but, you know, it just seems like that there is a market for this, and instead of, you know, we're trying to get things built in closer, and I don't know, I'm just really, I'd like to hear some opinion from some of the others here. I'll shut up, let you talk.
Anyone else? Mr. Little, Ms. Smith, anyone? Comment?
Well, there are a lot of different issues I've looked at in this one. You have the immediate, if I'm understanding this information correct, the property owner that's closest to it has signed the petition, saying they approve it, or they don't oppose it. The traffic issue I look at as, the overall area is driven by the proximity to the highway and traffic patterns beyond the store. I would imagine it's put there because that traffic is already there, as opposed to you have a new source to drive traffic. So for that reason, the traffic is not as big a concern to me. The thing that does concern me... The thing that does concern me, though, is the style of the building and the elevations of the building in a residential area. And that's, that's the part of this that I'm struggling with, is if it were more residential appearing, which I know this particular business is not, is not going to do that, but you see other types of commercial buildings that are able to adapt more to being within a residential setting. So that really is my biggest thing I'm looking at, is how it is actually going to fit in. I think you could have an appropriate rezoning for a business there, but it's the appearance and the fit in with the surrounding area that's concerning me. But the most adjacent property owner has not expressed opposition to that. So that weighs heavily in what I'm considering, too.
Yeah. Mr. Hicks, Mr. Lamb, anyone comments?
Nothing.
You know, I think the idea of putting the fence behind the planning, too, will keep that property owner. I think that was a good idea to do that.
You know, I'll just come in. I wouldn't interrupt you there. But we do, you know, we place a lot of weight on small area plans. It's, you know, I mean, I'm always criticizing because they're, you know, they're parcel-specific for the dividing lines, you know, come up, but, you know, that's something that I think about a lot.
Yeah, but I think the point that Brenda made is really important, that there are commercial buildings that could be put here that are much more appropriate for the neighborhood. I mean, if they had left that, I know it's not what the petitioner wants to do, but if, you know, if that home that was there was reused as a business, that would be a really good transition into the neighborhood or an office. And we've seen people do that on the edges of neighborhoods all around Winston-Salem. And that, to me, is much more appropriate than this large building that just clashes so much with the residential character of the neighborhood.
And I guess they've done, they've designed to match the drugstore, is that what they said?
Yeah.
And review the, help me go through, I'm trying to imagine the plantings again, the buffers, from, the most intensive buffer will be against the residence, is that right? The most intensive buffer is against the resident.
It will be against the resident where the fence is.
Ms. Whitaker.
On the...
You've got a six-foot privacy fence.
Right.
On her property line, I understand now. It's, the fence is going to be on her property.
No, it actually is moving from her property line, 15 feet in with the plantings on the back.
Got it.
See, that's, she wants to see the plants.
All right. So she's got, that's what she's got. Then on Angus, what does it look like again? As I'm looking, I'm driving down Angus, what's my buffer look like?
There is no buffer. Gary, is there a street yard?
It's a 10-foot street yard.
Two-foot street yard.
10-foot wide street yard, which is a tree every 50 feet, and a lesser degree of shrub planting.
Shrubs planted 18 inches tip-to-tip that will grow to touch and grow to 36 inches in height. So it'll essentially be a hedge that kind of blocks the headlights from Angus and from Athenia Rural Hall.
That's the minimum requirement.
There's a driveway there, though, that's...
Yeah, 50 feet of that, that three-lane driveway takes up a lot of area that obviously won't be planted.
So you'll have the, it won't all be screened?
Right.
With the street yard? I mean, it can't, if there's a driveway there.
Right.
And then you've got the dumpster there, too. And there's no dumpster, there's no screening of the dumpster, I guess, required.
It's, by ordinance, I'm sorry, Gary, by ordinance, it has, I mean, they have to provide an enclosure that matches the building. So if they're building a brick, I'm not exactly sure what the materials are, but whatever the materials of the building are will be matched with the dumpster enclosure, and it will be gated as well.
Okay. So it's a metal-sided building, then they can use metal screening for the dumpster?
I'd have to look at the particulars. It actually gives you design specifications. But generally, it's to match, to match the appearance of the building. But no, we wouldn't allow a corrugated metal one.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks like it's brick.
The front.
That's how it might be.
What is it? Is it split-face block, or what is it?
Stucco and stone.
Okay, stucco and stone.
So what's the rear elevation, I mean, the side elevation you're showing?
That faces Angus.
Right, that's what's facing Angus, and what, that's stucco.
And the ends are the same.
I think I'm struggling with this like everyone else. The 400 trips, a lot of those are already there, so you're just capturing existing traffic. You're not adding 400 new trips. I mean, that's the purpose of this. We try to put small businesses in the neighborhoods. The trips, folks that are going there, you're saving some trips on University to Walmart. So, I mean, so you've got a trade-off there. I'm torn because the neighbors, half of them are for it and half of them are against it. And that makes it kind of tough for me to decide. It complies with the area plan, it meets some of our objectives of trying to put neighborhood servicing, small retail, in the neighborhoods. So I still don't know which way I feel about it.
What are the usual hours of operation?
Nine to nine.
Nine to nine, what's that?
Nine to nine.
Anyone else have comments?
I struggle, too, because it's a matter of the lesser of two evils that could be coming your way. If this property isn't chosen for this particular business, what could be coming down the road a little later on? You may have something even worse. The traffic study's been done, and it's only 400, as he just alluded, not driving any more new traffic necessarily, but perhaps providing a service for the community. I'm struggling.
Yeah, I don't see it as being a residential law.
Nightmare.
I mean, next to the drugstore. So I don't think that use is what you'd see going forward. And I do think Angus creates a dividing line, if you will, between the commercial and the retail. I think it serves as where it would stop. I can't see that this would necessarily cause commercial to creep across Angus, especially Mr. and Ms. Shelton don't want to sell their house over there anyway, so.
Was that a residence before it was taken down there?
Apparently it was, yeah.
So it was, so there was a reasonable expectation by the neighbors that this was going to continue to be residential, and it was zoned that way?
Until such time as Ritek came in or the drugstore. So that's already changed. The neighborhood's already changed from Angus back to 52. There's been a lot of changes over the years. Well, we've closed the public hearing, ma'am.
Okay, definitely.
Okay, thank you, unless someone here wants to recognize the lady.
I just try and think what she might say that helped me make my mind up.
Well, then, come, give us your name and address for the record, ma'am, if you'd like to speak.
My name is Sarah Whitaker, and I live at 690 Angus Street. It's my property that adjoins this property. And when Mr. Strickland first come in the area and all this discussion started, I told him upfront I would work with him the best I could. And we've had a lot of meetings, we've had, not words, but we've had disagreements. But we finally did come up with something that would work for me. And I guess the way I look at it is I have to look out for me because I live there alone. So I'm the only one I've got to look out for. And the privacy fence that's going to hinge over onto his property is going to be taller than my six-foot fence. So it is going to give some blockage there. And for that, that was a selling point for me, that. And as far as Angus Street and traffic, well, I'm the first house on Angus Street. I see that the traffic on Angus Street is mostly from the people that's in those two or three little business things down there. I'm talking about myself. I've never had traffic to back up past my driveway. I haven't. But that don't mean it has not, and me not see it. But I just, I just thought maybe I would say how I felt about it. Maybe, I don't know whether that helps or hurts or anything, but this fence and all is what sold me on being able to... My main concern is my bedroom is right there on the very end of that house. And so now there is going to be a barrier there that per se blocks my bedroom. And it blocks the noise, and, you know, that's, that was my way in thing, if that kept y'all in any way.
It did help me, thank you.
That was great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I need a motion from this board to listen. We're going to be here all afternoon.
I'd like to make a motion that the petition be denied. And I appreciate what the neighbor had to say, but she's not the only one impacted by this. And it's on that basis that I'm recommending denial.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll sit.
Well, a motion for denial, any discussion? All in favor of denying the petition? Opposed? The motion fails. Is there another motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, Mr. Morgan, second, Mr. Lamb, any discussion? I'm just, I'll make a final comment that, you know, we've got this situation where the neighbors are split on it, it's tough, and I'm sure that the mayor will certainly represent the community as best he can to the county commissioners, because there's still, there'll be another public hearing there. So, but I'm going to support the staff's recommendation, I think it is. So we have a motion for approval, all in favor? Opposed? It passes for two opposed. Thank you. Thank you, folks.
That was a hard fight. I think this one was significantly impacted there.
All right. Next item on your agenda is zoning docket W.3251. The petitioner is Mid Huff Ventures Incorporated, and the property is 2.13 acres, just about twice the size of that site that we just looked at, located on the southeast corner of South Main Street and Cassell Street. And their request is a special-use limited rezoning without a site plan from RS9 Residential Single Family and HB Highway Business 2HB Special Use Limited for the three uses of retail store, offices, and services A. And services A would include use such as a hair salon, that type. This is the legacy growth management plan. It's located within the pink urban neighborhoods, growth management area two. And this is a zoning map showing the subject property there in yellow in the center. The site is undeveloped. It currently has dual zoning on it. A little bit over half of the site is zoned highway business. It fronts along South Main Street. It also has a stream that traverses through the center of it, that kind of runs parallel with Cassell Street. The back, the eastern portion, is currently zoned RS9 Single Family Residential. Have a little bit of a mixture of zoning in the area. The property directly across the street is also zoned highway business general use, which does allow a wide array of uses, fairly, some fairly intense uses, restaurants with drive-throughs, car washes, et cetera. Currently, that is the location of the Dixon Animal Hospital. Directly north across Cassell Street is a property zoned LB that was a former location of the Nitty Gritty Restaurant. Aerial photographs showing the development pattern of the subject property. You can see most of the site is wooded. There is, maybe a third of the site has been cleared, fairly level, fairly developable portion of the property that's located there in the southwest corner. And that zoning line, again, that goes along the midsection of it, there's a 40-foot setback requirement from that line into the site for any building. You can park closer to that and have your buffet yard within that, but buildings can't be, they have to be at least 40 feet back from that line. So moving that line over to the east, removing the dual zoning of this property, would allow the more, more usable portion of that site to actually, to be used. The petitioner has agreed to a condition that there be no buildings installed or constructed north of the creek which traverses through the site. That's not a designated flood plain, but it's a pretty good drop-off there and pretty wooded in that area. It's also a sewer line that goes through there, so that would provide a good continued measure of screening there for the residents along Cassell. It's located within the South Suburban Area Plan that was adopted in 2011. You can see the site shown there in yellow, excuse me, in red. The area plan recommends that this be, all of it be used for commercial purposes. There's no special land use designation such as the previous case where it recommended low intensity or office. It just recommends commercial for the entire site. These images are taken on site. This is looking north on Main Street. The site's on the right there, that's the current access into the property. Looking back, looking east into the site, have a single-family home located directly to the, to the right. And again, there would be a 40-foot setback from that southern property line. This is looking south on Main Street, site's just to the left there. Looking at Dixon Ottoman Animal Hospital across the street. And looking into the ravine I mentioned earlier and the sewer line and the stream there. Cassell Street is in the background. That's the Nitty Gritty, former Nitty Gritty location. And this is Cassell Street there. There is a sidewalk located along there, and the site is to the right. Site has now split zoning, and the majority of the site is already zoned highway business general use. The South Suburban Area Plan recommends commercial use for the entire site, and the request excludes the more intense uses that are now permitted on the HB portion, such as car wash, convenience store, motor vehicle, body or paint shop, and restaurant with drive-through. So although there's not the full flat portion of the site is usable from a building standpoint, right now, some fairly intense uses could be built on the property. And so the petitioner has agreed to just three uses: retail store, services A, and And the request does include a condition that no buildings could be built on the north side of the stream. Also, you have before you, the petitioner has submitted some building elevations, which I'll bring up on the overhead. And we have not done a condition for building elevations on a special-use limited case before where we don't have a site plan to tie the articulation, the footprint of the building to. But we spoke with the city attorney, and he said that that is something that if the petitioner submits it, that we can do that. So our standard condition, you can read that, the two front top conditions which we've added there. The proposed building plans will be in substantial conformance with the submitted elevations, and it's shown on Exhibit A, is verified by planning staff. And then, under issuance of occupancy permits, just a follow-up condition, buildings shall be constructed in substantial conformance with the approved building elevations as approved by planning staff. And then the other condition is that no construction take place on the north side of the stream. So planning staff's recommendation is for approval, and these are the elevations. Brick exterior, pitched roof, some dormer windows, windows on the front. So those would be some of the elements, asphalt shingles that we will be looking for, comparable elements for any new building that would be built on there. And I'll be glad to answer any questions. I would also mention, again, the planning staff has recommended approval, but you have a letter before you from the council member, James Taylor, from this ward that recommends a continuance on this case. There will be a neighborhood meeting held on the 24th of March.
Yeah, I was going to share, I think you saw the letter from Councilmember Taylor. He asked for continuance. He asked for continuance. The petitioner does not want to do that. We typically, we certainly could continue it. We normally don't do that unless the petitioner's in agreement with that, but that's not to say we, we couldn't. So, I don't know how the board feels about that. Do you want to honor the council members' request? Are you gonna go ahead and hear it? The board, town, meeting's already scheduled. They're gonna have a meeting anyway before it goes to city council. Just haven't had one before it comes to us. So...
Well, we talked about before, I know I brought up the need for neighborhood meetings in, in the past and the response that, at least my understanding of, of what others replied to me was that in cases where there were, cases that were contested when there hadn't been a neighborhood meeting prior to the planning board meeting, that it would be the normal practice of the board to require a continuance. And I think this fits into that category. I also think it's really valuable to have the input from the neighborhood meeting at the planning board level when we consider the case. A lot of times, some issues can get worked out ahead of time. And I think this is a good example of a case where that, the potential's there to do that. And so, the meeting would not be of any value occurring after the planning board to our deliberations on the case. So, I just think it would be a better idea to go ahead and, and continue it.
So, pardon me, is my understanding that the petitioner did not have a meeting?
It is not. It's scheduled March the 24th. So, he has one scheduled.
The petitioner has spoken with several of the neighbors, but there has not been an official meeting. And this meeting will be in conjunction with the request of, of the council member.
Okay, but, okay, so the petitioner did not have a meeting?
Oh, yeah. No, it is not.
That's correct.
But did the petitioner set this meeting up? Let's come in it? Or did it, did?
In conjunction with the council member.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we need to delay it and let him have the meeting.
Well, before we hear the case and where the petitioner come up, give us his name and address and tell us why he's not willing to consider a continuance.
Okay.
Okay. He might have some contractual obligations or something.
I'm Bob Middleton, 257 Trinity Church Road, King, North Carolina. I have talked with the neighbors that had joined the property. They're okay with what I plan on doing. These buildings are to be built and look like a house instead of a residential, a commercial building. I already have two of these projects in town. One on Patterson Avenue and one out on the street right at the end of Office Trap is where they're building a new shopping center there. I have two people here that, that own the adjoining property. They're like what I have showed them and what I've told them. I understand we have one here that signed up to speak against it. Putting it off, we're talking about June before I can ever do anything. And then I'm gonna be doing the building through a general contractor. I'm not licensed. I've remodeled probably a hundred and some houses here in town that we buy, rebuild, and rent. We have thirty-some of these little commercial buildings around town with small churches, beauty shops, barber shops, uniform shops, tax offices. I'm not trying to push anything over anybody whatsoever.
Yeah. I would normally be encouraging you to continue it as well, but what I'm looking at here though is essentially a downzoning of the property, taking away some of the intense uses. And we do have elevations that look like, you know, so we, we pretty much know what he, so, but I don't know how the board feels about it. Do you want to, would it be a problem if we continued it a month? Or you prefer us to make a decision here and just knowing that not having the neighborhood meeting sometime works against you with some board member?
Well, we've got a neighborhood meeting already set up. It was set up with James Taylor's assistant. I think it's the 24th.
So, you want to go ahead and hear the case?
I would love to.
Okay. Present your case.
I'm comfortable with that, given he's made, he's talked to, there's been some communication. If additional information did come out of the meeting, it would, there's an opportunity for that to affect the outcome of the case.
I would have one person to call me about it that after I explained what it would be was against it.
Yeah. Well, you're gonna hear some opposition here today. And you might have a board member or two that would vote against you because you haven't had a meeting. So, as long as you understand.
I understand that.
Okay, then present your case, sir.
But this is, this is a new experience for me.
Don't we have an opportunity to make a motion to continue?
Well, sure, you can.
Yes.
Okay. Good. I... He hasn't made, he hasn't told us what he's gonna do. We're gonna decide whether or not we're gonna continue it, Ms. Highsmith.
Yeah. I, I feel like we have some obligation to city council members, particularly when it's within this ward, because we need to do the busy work on this and, and not send it to them and have it debated again in front of the city. It, it seems like there's good feelings on both sides. These elevations, I think, are gonna help. There's, there's a potential in here to, to put a lot worse in, in this area. And I think there've been some good designs that, that certainly helped me when I see this. But if, if the community can get together and work this out before we have to discuss it with opposing, and if, if it could be worked out before city council has to spend a tremendous amount of time going back through this again, I think it's better for everyone. So, I'd like to make a motion to continue this for 30 days and, and just hear it again and, and try to be supportive to move it along at that point or whatever.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that motion?
I just wanna say that, I mean, I just think it's setting a bad precedent to allow someone to have their, their meeting after the planning board meets. That makes no sense to me at all. How can we deliberate when, when they haven't had that community? I know they've had some communication, but let's let everybody have an opportunity to discuss it first.
Of course, now, there is no formal requirement that they have to have a meeting. It's strongly suggested that they do, so. Mr. Milton, can you come back up, please? Tell us why we should not continue it 30 days.
Well, it would put me over till about June before I can start doing anything. Time we put this off and then we gotta wait again to the...
Well, I understand that, but do you have any contractual obligations, timelines or anything?
No, I'm seventy-five years old and I may be leaving here tomorrow.
You don't have any leases, you don't have leases committed to a certain opening date or anything like that?
No, sir.
Okay.
I know, I've got the material packed up to do the job and, and some of it's been packed up five years, so, you know.
Okay.
Question for you, sir.
Yes, sir.
How long will the completion of the project take if you started in June?
It'll probably be Christmas time I get through.
Six, seven months. You know, I have a tendency to agree, you know, with the motion on, I really, we do, you know, strongly recommend that they have a meeting, even though it may be a slam dunk. We still do that and we always, that report weighs heavily on who shows up here today. So...
Well, I got two for it and one against it, so.
Okay. Ms. Highsmith wanted to say something.
I just had, I was gonna, I have an argument here as to why we continue.
Why what?
An argument as to why we want to continue the, the day's meeting so that we can have the neighborhood meeting before and tell them I'm making a hot point.
I have discussed it with Ms. Highsmith for thirty, thirty-five minutes.
Well, I told you that we wanted a meeting.
Well, yeah, okay. But y'all need to take your conversation outside the room here, okay? All right. We, we have a motion to continue it. Is any discussion on that motion?
Only that it's not, the meeting's not required. You know, we don't make people do beyond what the law requires, you know? We shouldn't.
I'm struggling with this, that there's been communication. If someone in the community that already knows about this wants to, did, did anyone come to you and ask you to have a meeting?
I didn't.
I mean, we know that the city councilman did.
Ms. Highsmith did when our first conversation, and I hadn't heard from her since, but I got with James Taylor's assistant.
Okay.
And she set the meeting up, got the meeting place and all.
So, was there any discussion of trying to make sure it was had, you had the meeting before the planning board meeting?
No, ma'am.
Or was that considered part of the important? I mean, who set the, the date of the meeting?
They set the date of the meeting.
Okay.
And I requested...
We're actually asking for less zoning than it's already zoned for.
Yeah, it's down. And if a meeting should be required, and we feel so strongly about that, then we should debate that and determine whether we should impose the meeting requirement or not. To date, we've not decided to make that a requirement. We haven't. We've got sort of this, you know, sorta requirement, strongly encouraged requirement and everything else, but, you know, if it's really that big of a deal, then we ought to debate it and see if that, you know, if that passes or not.
Well, I, I think the council member, I mean, that puts a lot of bearing on it for me, that he's, he's requesting this. And, you know, if it may have come from somewhere else, I may not be as gung-ho to do this.
But these things can run in parallel. You know, this man can take his chances in front of this board, as to what his recommendation's gonna be, knowing he's gonna have a meeting, he's gonna, he's gonna comply with the council person's request. And then the council, the council's the one that's gonna decide. And I'm also not sure how this will speed, I guess there'll still be a public hearing at the council, right? So, I don't know how we'll streamline it for the council, you know? If we wait a month and put it on consent, if it's, if it ends up on consent, I don't know if it will or not. I don't know that that's gonna streamline it for council.
Well, I think that however, the vote, if we go ahead and do this and however the vote takes place, I think that's gonna weigh in on, on that meeting regardless of whether it's up or down. And, you know, I, I hear what he's saying. Being a developer myself, I know 30 days is, you know, to me, it wouldn't kill me or make me or break me, in other words. And if that would appease the councilman and everybody concerned.
Yeah.
Then let's just give them a 30 days and we'll see you next month. I mean, if that's what the vote is. But if not, we'll do it today.
Ms. Highsmith, do you have a comment?
I'm just, I'm, what I'm struggling with is it's not something that's required. We respect the community and their desire to have input. That opportunity is here to have input. And we also respect the councilman's request. So, I'm, I'm really debating this on a lot of different levels of what's truly appropriate to make the best decision.
Right.
Monica does not have been scheduled through the council member before today. I mean, they picked the date, but when did was the request made? I, I, I just don't understand why.
I think if we let Ms. Highsmith speak, she might be able to shed some light on it.
Okay.
I'd like to hear Ms. Highsmith.
Okay.
All right.
For what our projections are.
Okay. Sure, come over, Ms. Highsmith, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Carolyn Highsmith and I live at 3335 Anderson Drive. I, at 27127. I am here today on behalf of the Connaught Hills Community Association where I'm the president. And we represent all of the houses that go up South Main Street, Luther Street, Anderson Drive, that will be impacted by this development.
Are we gonna let her present her case?
Is this a public hearing?
No, she's gonna tell us why we should continue the case, I think. That's all we...
Okay. Well, and so, the, so I, I am respectfully requesting a continuance for the W. 3251 zoning case so that an already scheduled neighborhood zoning meeting on March the 24th can be held before the planning board, can be held before the planning board makes an official ruling on this case. The reason why we, the issue is, I did not see the zoning sign until last Monday night because of all the inclement weather. I was actually going to a city council meeting. I saw the zoning sign. I immediately contacted the planning department that I was aware of the zoning case. We had some issues with it or we, or we needed to have a discussion with the developer in, in more detail. And, and then the developer, because I made that inquiry to the planning staff, he called me and then I returned this call because I wasn't at home. And I told him we wanted to have a meeting and that I was gonna try to set it up with James Taylor, the southeast ward council member. It's just because, because of the bad weather and that the neighbors, no one, no neighbors had seen the sign, that we just started trying to get this meeting set up within the last week. And we don't have a lot of meeting spaces. I only had a meeting space available for April the 7th. And so, he was able to get the Main Street Academy for the 24th, for this area right in here. So, that's why I wanted the continuance. I, I also have other reasons why I want the continuance. I have several concerns related to the case. If you want, do you wanna hear those?
No.
Okay, okay.
We just gonna decide whether we're gonna continue it or not by now.
That's, that's why the date is the 24th. We just could not get everything because of meeting spaces before this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess because she just saw the sign and, and, you know...
But it was posted on the website and all that. I mean, the case was...
But we had no idea if I was gonna be doing anything on this lot. It's been vacant for a hundred years.
Well, I'm gonna support the motion to continue because I think it's gonna, if he doesn't continue it, it's gonna make it very difficult for him to get approval. So, I'm making a practical, pragmatic, practical decision.
Yeah. I think I'm there as well, because if we don't, then you probably never get it approved in city council. So, any other discussion on that? We have a motion to continue it for 30 days. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Sorry about that, Mr. Milton. We'll see you next month.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Next item on the agenda is UDO 257. The petitioner on this text amendment is Planning and Development Services staff, and this request would create regulations for urban agriculture in the city of Winston-Salem. Just a little bit of background for this text amendment. The need for revising urban agriculture standards was identified both by members of the Forsyth County Local Foods Consortium and others interested in growing food in urban and suburban areas in the Legacy 2030 creation process. To that point, Legacy 2030 recommends encouraging healthy food production in urban as well as rural areas of the city and county and removing barriers to using urban land and buildings for agricultural purposes. Just to go through quickly the current regulations for agriculture in the city. Agriculture is a standalone use. In other words, the only use on that lot is only allowed in Winston-Salem in large lot residential zoning districts such as RS20, RS30, RS40, and the Ag District, and only then with Board of Adjustment approval. However, as you all are aware, very few lots in Winston-Salem have large lot zoning with the vast majority being zoned RS9 or RS12. A minimum of three acres in agricultural production is also required to do standalone agriculture currently. Most agriculture in the city today is done under the accessory use provisions, and agriculture is considered an accessory if it's associated with a residence, an institution like a church, community center, health center, or business on the same zoning lot. So, the proposed ordinance, in addition to the currently allowed accessory gardens and large-scale agriculture, it would also allow smaller standalone agriculture as the principal use on lots in neighborhoods. And staff believes that the potential impacts of agriculture in these residential areas should be minimized through the proposed ordinance standards. So, now I'll just go quickly through the details of what that would entail. First of all, this amendment would allow urban agriculture in all residential districts, so both small lot and large lot districts, but through the Board of Adjustment Special Use Permit process. This process requires a public hearing, findings of fact, and presenting evidence to the board that these gardens or agriculture wouldn't negatively affect properties in the area. And no minimum acreage requirements are proposed, again, to try and make it easier for folks to have these gardens in their neighborhoods. And no minimum acreage requirements are proposed, again, to try and make it easier for folks to have these gardens in their neighborhoods. One use condition that we're proposing is that agricultural cultivation be setback at least five feet from adjoining property. And this is because, as any of you who do backyard gardening are aware, that if you're digging a row for planting or things of that nature, you don't want to be doing that right on the property line, because it's going to affect some land on both sides of where you're digging. So that's where this five-foot setback comes from. Parking may be required in certain situations where you might have a really large agricultural operation, but that would be determined through the Board of Adjustment. We didn't want to make an absolute parking ordinance requirement, because we feel that in most cases, folks are just going to walk from their house down the block or things of that nature. As far as fees go, the Board of Adjustment reviews are generally in a hundred-dollar fee when presenting this ordinance to the community. There was a lot of concern that if we went with that high of a fee, this would really limit the ability of folks to use this ordinance. So working with our inspections division and the community, we came up with a twenty-five-dollar fee for urban agriculture that requires the Board of Adjustment review. That's the same as the review for urban chickens and some of the other agricultural things that you all have heard in the past few years. This ordinance also would allow greater flexibility in providing urban agriculture in commercial areas of the city. This ordinance would allow the agriculture as a principal use, like we just talked about, in non-residential zoning, but with only a staff zoning permit. Since much more intense commercial buildings would already be allowed there, we didn't feel it was necessary to require that same Board of Adjustment review. Additionally, indoor agriculture, such as hydroponics, aquaponics, food processing, would be allowed in manufacturing A and manufacturing B, which are allowed in industrial and certain commercial districts. And those uses have been explicitly outlined in the new proposed definition for those uses. So overall, staff believes that the proposed ordinance will help facilitate urban agriculture as desired by the citizens of Winston-Salem and supported in Legacy Twenty-Thirty, while still protecting the residential character of our urban and suburban neighborhoods. I know some folks have signed up to speak regarding the ordinance, but I'll be glad to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions to staff? Okay. This is a public hearing. Several folks signed up to support. I will tell you, no one has signed up in opposition, so you're not going to take a whole lot to convince us, I don't think. But anyway, we'll, we'll start with, is it Ann Bliss?
Ladies and gentlemen of the board and Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I appear before you as representative of the Forsyth Community Food Consortium. I did notice the county. It's an easy mistake to make, but we are the Forsyth Community Food Consortium. My name again, Ann Bliss, and I live at one oh five Corbridge Lane, Winston, two-seven-one-zero-six. My first concern is to express the board's, the consortium's appreciation for the effort that this ordinance represents. We especially appreciated the participation of staff at the many networking forums that our consortium hosts. The staff did a wonderful job presenting their research. They listened carefully and showed genuine interest to the concerns that all of the participants at that forum have given. And I think that the product you see before you, the proposed ordinance, is a wonderful result. It certainly speaks to the board's commitment to strengthening our local food system. I thank you. On behalf of the consortium, urge support.
Thank you. Martha Hartley?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. My name is Martha Hartley, six hundred South Main Street, two-seven-one-oh-one. I bring a historical perspective tonight from old Salem museums and gardens. Urban farming was begun in our community two-hundred-and-fifty years ago, when Salem was first established in the seventeen-sixties. Gardens were considered essential and were designed into the grid plan for Salem. Residential lots were typically a third of an acre and all had a large garden area. There were also outlined agricultural lots available for cultivation as well. Although Salem was a craft, a town of crafts, trades, and professions, it was an urban place and not intended to be an agricultural community. Gardens were ubiquitous, with vegetables and fruits as well as herbs and flowers. The Single Brothers House today, as you know, fronts Main Street at Salem Square. And in the rear yard is the large kitchen garden that fed as many as sixty men and boys at one time. Historically stretching west from this garden into what is now West Salem, were seven hundred acres of field crops and meadows. Typical of the Moravian wise land management, whenever there was a vacant lot in town, it was available to be used for gardens and for orchards. In this way, lots that were not yet needed for building were kept neat and orderly in cultivation, rather than overgrown with weeds and potential attraction for rats and snakes. There is certainly deep precedent for urban farming in our community, and it can only bring good, healthy opportunity for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Jane Milner?
Good evening. I'm Jane Milner, and I live at twenty-three twenty-one Maplewood Avenue in Winston-Salem, two-seven-one-oh-three. And I'm here as both an individual and also for the North Carolina Housing Foundation, where I work part-time now. But as an individual, I've been very concerned for a number of years about the health of our population everywhere. The obesity epidemic and that's cardiovascular illnesses that are on the increase, and certainly cancer, which has taken a tremendous toll in my own family. And we are all becoming very much more aware of the need for fresh local vegetables that we can get a hold of that are not, and not eating processed food. So from that standpoint, I am so in favor of adding more places for agriculture in our neighborhoods, and particularly in our areas where there are food deserts designated. One of them being up in the area where we have developed, North Carolina Housing Foundation developed Veterans Helping Veterans Heal, the corner of Glenn and Ogburn, up near our local airport. That's a food desert up there. And we developed a really wonderful garden in cooperation with the North Carolina Cooperative Extension Service for the veterans that are living at Veterans Helping Veterans Heal. And we're using it as a training ground for job training, to teach these men more about sustainable agricultural practices. And we also have a commercial kitchen there, and we are also planning to use that at some point in time for what we call a production garden, taking something from the garden and making it into something else, and then selling it as a teaching skill for the guys, and also as a way to generate revenue for the program. But, so these are things that, these programs are all in their infancy, and I think that what we're seeing now is more interest in gardens everywhere, agriculture everywhere in our community and elsewhere around the country. And I just hope that we have the opportunity to have, the ability to have these gardens flourishing everywhere, so people can be healthier and we can do more job creation. And also, I just want to make one other point. Lowe's Corporate Foods was over volunteering one day with our guys, the veterans at V H V H, and they are so interested in buying product that is being grown locally. So it is an economic generator, and it does mean that we can go to our supermarkets, not just our garden stands, and buy more healthy food. And so I encourage this again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mark Jensen? How much time we got left, Chris?
Seven minutes and twelve seconds.
Oh, good job.
Good evening, Mr. King and the board. I, Mark Jensen, I live at fifty-six seventy Lauren Acres Court, Winston-Salem, two-seven-one-oh-three. I, to support the amendments to the U D O that you've got before you, I think these changes will spur innovation in agricultural and food sectors in both the city and the county. They, the amendments are in harmony with recommendations of the twenty, two thousand and thirteen study on the Forsyth County Local Food System, a study commissioned and supported in part by the county. In addition to growing food, I think the small businesses and not-for-profit enterprises, some of which you've heard about already, that spring up, will cultivate not only vegetables but innovation, create jobs and marketable job skills, as you've heard, multiply social capital in our neighborhoods, increase access to healthy local foods, and therefore contribute to improved public health. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's all that signed up. Anyone else like to speak in support of this? All right, there are two of you there. We still got a little bit of time.
Good evening. My name is Allison Duncan, fourteen fifty Fairchild Road, two-seven-one-oh-five. And I'm the county's community gardening coordinator, and I work for Cooperative Extension. I'm here today to voice my support for the urban agriculture ordinance, specifically as it relates to community gardens. As of today, there are more than a hundred active community gardens located within the Winston-Salem city limits, and the benefits of these community gardens extend well beyond their physical borders. Our city's community gardens increase food access to fresh produce in food insecure areas. They foster relationships between diverse groups of people. They unite neighborhoods, families, associations, clubs, and faith groups. And they provide green space and opportunities for physical and social activity. Furthermore, the presence of community gardens correlates with crime reduction, increased property value, increased civic engagement, and improved community image. And with the adoption of the proposed urban agriculture ordinance, community gardens in our city will have greater legal protection. Additionally, it will allow groups to establish community gardens on property that cannot currently be legally cultivated. This ordinance will support existing and future community gardens in our city, and it is a progressive measure, which will improve our city and serve as an example to other municipalities in our region. And for those reasons, I encourage the board to recommend the adoption of the urban agriculture ordinance. And we have a lot of folks who are here today who are community gardeners, and if you guys would stand, that'd be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I got one question. We already got a hundred of these, what's, are they all illegal? Are we...
No, sir, no, sir. May or not. The vast majority of these are currently legal, and we have not had any complaints that have come in about any of them.
I've given you all that.
Oh, no, that's fine. I can, I think I can count the illegal ones on one hand, which is a good thing.
I'm sure they're all accessory.
They're all accessory, okay.
But what this does do is it makes it clear on how we can go about encouraging these. And it, there's a lot of gray area in the ordinance currently, and so this helps us clean that up and be able to advise folks confidently.
I just need to know if I need to call security for all these people sitting there. I remember breaking the law right now. Ma'am, you want to speak?
Good evening. My name is Irma Jackson. I live at eight-four-six Gramble Drive, two-seven-one-zero-one. I am also a community gardener. I mentor schools' community garden as well. So I do have the accessory use. What I would like to say to you is some of, some of it is redundant, because not only did Martha hit some of the points that I want to make, so did Allison. But I work with a group that has a community garden in our neighborhood on a lot that belongs to Salem Baptist Church. And what I would say is that having a community garden on a vacant lot does several things. It is an eyesore if it's allowed to grow up. There are rodents, there are snakes, and it is a danger and a hazard for children who would be playing in that area. If you have a community garden there, you do several things. Four things that I think it does is it helps neighbors to know each other. It creates a sense of diversity, because we didn't all grow up in the same place, so it's diverse. It increases the safety of the neighborhood, because now you meet people that you would not normally meet. And the question I would ask is how many of us really know our neighbors? Most of us know the person who may stay beside of us, but we all go in and out of our doors, and we don't really pay attention. This would help to create social capital for those people. It also creates fresh food, fresh food for those people, and you know what the origin is. Not everybody will want to work in a garden, but those who work in the garden would then produce this fresh food that might be shared with the whole neighborhood. It improves the value of the property for those people, because now people begin to take pride in the property that they own. And if there's a garden there, they want to make sure that it's not overgrown with weeds. Finally, it creates the potential of creating jobs. We all live in a place now economically where everybody struggles. There are some families that struggle with food the year round. This would be a way to help them to manage that possibility better. And it typically would create a win-win position for everybody. It provides economic possibility for those people who are possibly learning to use the garden and its tools and the food that it produces. It also helps the city, because it now makes you look like you actually care about these residents. I mean, really. Because you're doing something that's going to potentially help them. And it helps to eliminate some of the food deserts, especially in urban areas, where there are very few stores that produce food that's good for people to eat. And I would, I would ask that you at least consider making, approving this urban agricultural zoning.
Thank you. How much time we have left?
Forty seconds.
Forty seconds. Anyone just burning, okay. Well, two of you, okay. We'll give you twenty seconds each.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Banner, and I reside at five-fifteen North Jackson Avenue. I'm very excited about the whole program that possibly could be passed. I have to say the uncomfortable things, because that's, that's just me. What I fear is that, well, let me first give you a little backdrop. I've been doing gardening for like six years now. I know because my daughter's six, I started as soon as she was born. The daughter who I delivered in my mother's house, I was in fear that I wouldn't have enough money to provide, to feed her. So I immediately started going in my mama's backyard and digging up the ground and growing a little food. But what it is, like you said, is a lot of people growing food in our urban areas. Urban equals, most of the time, African descent and Latino descent. So in our areas, it's a lot of people dealing with this food desert thing. I have to go all the way across town to the so-called, like I said, I had to say the uncomfortable things. I have to go to the so-called white section of town to get fresh food and vegetables. So I'm, I'm saying the same things everyone else has been saying. Like you said, it's really illegal to start a garden in the community on these abandoned lots that are right beside our house. I actually have possums and rats that come out through my yard. You know what I'm saying? I've called this a few times. I've gotten no relief from that. It would much more, it would be much more of a benefit to our community to have these gardens run properly. Now my, one of my last things, uh, words I want to throw in, and pardon me because I'm kind of nervous. You know what I'm saying? One of the few things I want to make sure I get in, dealing with the psychology of our people, because agriculture, of course, one of the root words of it is culture, and it's very important to me. So in our communities, the urban communities, you know what I'm saying, these food deserts, I feel like we should get first priority as far as bringing the ones who introduce these cultures to these lots. Now, I thought it was very rude for the liberty food, farmers' market to be getting built up there, and they didn't come through the community and train anyone on how to get this stuff out of the ground? Because believe it or not, even though we came over to this country to grow a lot of food, it's not a secret, now we don't grow a lot of food. Now we can go through these same neighborhoods and even, well, I can't say my daughter, because she's seen food all her life. But a lot of my nieces and nephews, you could present something you grew to them and present something that was in the grocery store, and they would snatch it up immediately. So it's dealing with psychology. So if you have outside groups coming to our communities where, where they're showing us how to do these things, these things have been tried before, and they failed. If people, outside groups coming to our communities, trying to instruct us on how to grow food and also providing all the food for us, our self-esteem is still crushed, but the developers come up. You know what I mean? So we want to be in a, in a position where we could be more of developing our own real estate, if you understand what I'm saying. I would like parts from everyone who spoke on the food initiative, these things, before you leave the room. I very much appreciate your time. I got love for you all. It's just my way of expressing myself. Love, peace, and justice.
You took more than forty seconds, but I appreciate what you had to say. Ma'am, I'm going to let you speak as well. You raised your hands. You raised your hands, so.
That was a hard act to follow.
It is.
I'm Ellen Kirby. I live at 3965 Rosebrier Lane, Winston-Salem. I'm one of the coordinators of the food bank garden at the Children's Home, and if any of you know anything, I know some of you know a lot about the Children's Home. It's property on Ronaldo Road. It's been there over a hundred years, and it has a large farm that originally the, the crops were used to provide food for the kids who lived at the Children's Home. Now we have been privileged as a food bank garden to have about two acres of that land to grow food for second harvest food bank. In the last five years, our volunteers have raised over twenty tons of fresh produce for the food bank. But as the speaker, the man who just spoke said, one of the main values of any community garden, and our garden, has been the multiplier effect of the opportunity for people to come to the garden, learn how to grow things, and then go home and grow in their own garden. Or people to come and share experiences from their own background about how we should grow things and what we should grow. We have a lot of interesting debates about whether we should grow okra or not, whether we should grow onions or not, and I could go on and on. But we try to grow foods that can be used by the general population and are familiar to the general population. I would say, and I know, because I know that you've got limited time, but I just want to leave with you, six things that I think are benefits of community gardens and urban agriculture. Now, our garden sits on this two-acre property. On one side, you look at cows grazing the field, and the other side, you look at the skyline of Winston-Salem. So we really are an example of urban agriculture. First of all, in terms of values, we use of available land for growing food. There's a lot of available land in Winston-Salem. Secondly, education about growing food, including preparing the soil, planting and planting the seeds that grow, knowing when to plant. I mean, we've been debating for the last two weeks whether it's going to be warm enough next week to plant potatoes. So that's how very specific it gets in terms of knowing how to raise food and to use food. Knowledgees about best practices, including use of pollinators, beneficial pollinators. We're getting five beehives next week. Learning things about composting, cover crops, a whole variety of things that relate to, I know your goals for sustainability and the city's own commitment to sustainable practices. New respect for farmers in, in both the urban and the rural areas, and this is something that we have in Winston-Salem that is a great advantage, is the close proximity between urban and rural people, seeing the, the ways that we have common interests, seeing ways that farmers can help teach urban people how to grow food and vice versa. Marketing practices, all of those issues that have already been raised here about job, new jobs generation, et cetera. I worked in New York City for forty years, born in Winston-Salem, but one of the main advantages of the urban gardens were teaching youth marketable skills. They were more interested in how you sell things than they were in how you grow things, but they learned both skills in the process of being part of a community garden. Preservation of open space in Winston-Salem, things are a lot more crowded than they were when I was born here some many years ago, but fortunately, we still have a lot of open space, and this is a positive way of using the open space that we have. Most importantly, though, is for people, especially children, to learn where their food comes from, and how important it is to grow and eat safe, fresh, nutritious. Nutrition is a big part of this, but the process of learning to grow a garden is one that makes you appreciate all these things much more than just grabbing a can of spaghetti or whatever off the shelf of a grocery store, if you have a grocery store, rather than growing your own tomatoes and learning how to make sauce, et cetera. So, one of the spin-off effects is that every garden that you've heard people speak about has a spin-off effect to create more gardens, to create better science education, to create people with greater self-esteem, and we could go on and on and on. So I'm so glad that our city is doing this, and I applaud your efforts to make this happen. It's not a real easy thing, but I'm really grateful that you are doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to now turn to the opposition. Does anyone dare speak against this? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Move approval. Motion, Mr. Lamb, second, Mr. Morgan, any discussion?
Well, I certainly want to speak in favor of this, growing up in a small farm here that's now within the city limits and having the luxury to run the largest farm within the city limits at the Children's Home as a CEO there, and being able to help out Ellen and some of the folks as well as to help out some, starting some farming on Thurman Street along the way. So I think that's important. I've also seen the demand, as a member of the triad, buying co-op, which buys vegetables and is looking for local, and we need to see that. We also saw with the Children's Home, our orchard turned into Arbor Acres, our Sherwood Farm turned into Sherwood Forest. So this is a wonderful step to bring some of that back into Winston-Salem with the vigor that's there, so I fully support it.
Okay. Yeah, the comments. I'll add that we built the farmers' market in Kernersville Shelter about six years ago, and I've been the volunteer market coordinator for the last six years, and it has been one of the greatest pleasures getting to know the folks, the farmers and our vendors there at the farmers' market, so I applaud all of you and commend you for what you're doing.
I think what you've been spoke here today, if you, if you'd ever thought about gardening, these people that spoke today, they must want to garden. They really do. And you know, the camaraderie, the lady that talked about getting to know your neighbors, I think that's fantastic. I think that this is a win-win situation.
We have a motion for approval, all in favor? Any opposed, as unanimous? Thank you. Thank you, folks. We have any committee reports?
No committee reports.
Do we have a staff report?
A brief one.
Okay.
First of all, we have four new cases that were filed for April, so that'll be combined with the two that were continued today, plus a text amendment, plus the southwestern suburban area plan coming to you. So we'll brief the text amendment and the area plan with you at your work session coming Sign check is the next thing I need to ask about. Just for everyone on the board who was not at the work session last Thursday, it was decided that we're going to start with this next month shifting sign check to the afternoons of Monday afternoons. Now, this first time, it's going to start at 2:15, but after this first time, then it'll, from then on, be 1:15 in the afternoon. So we'll try that and see how that works. Hopefully, the caseload doesn't get too great and the traffic doesn't get too bad at a work, you know, later in the afternoon, so. But I do want to ask you about May, because May, the sign check would normally be on Memorial Day. Well, we're not going to do that on Memorial Day, so when it's a holiday like that, we move the sign check to Friday, and I'm thinking that instead of doing it Friday afternoon, you'd rather do it Friday morning, given that it's a afternoon before a holiday and, and all that. So, so I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up. We'll try to schedule that one for the, for 8:15 in the morning on Friday, May 22nd. Next thing is we've got East Northeast Area Plan kickoff that's going to be happening on March 17th at the Rupert Bell Center. Clarence is your representative on, on that. That got continued, that got postponed a month because of the bad weather last, last month. And then the last thing I want to mention is that we have arranged with the city attorney's office for ethics training, and we contacted, I think, several of you who had not yet had that, and we've landed on a date that I'm hoping will work for those who haven't had ethics training, and it's also open to any of you who want to come back, who've already had it. We're talking about April 23rd, which is a Thursday, at 3:30, which is an hour before your April work session. So we thought that would be convenient for folks to, coming down for work, work session to just come an hour early, and Al Andrews, the deputy city attorney, can work that in. Now, we're going to also invite other board and commission members from the Historic Resources Commission and Community Appearance Commission to sit on that if, if, if they, you know, to try to get it all in one, one fell swoop, but hopefully that date will work for those who need to come and/or those who want to come, so.
We're going to come at 3:30.
3:30, yeah. So with that, that's staff report.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Any board members, anything for the good of the order?
I want to wish everyone a happy Easter, and motion to adjourn.
All in favor? We're adjourned. Welcome on board.